All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, planning commissioners and the public for your participation today. My name is David Weiner. I'm the Chair of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission, and welcome to the February 10th, 2021 Virtual Information Session of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. I call this meeting to order. Today's informal session is being conducted electronically in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708. That, uh, two Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413 and the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted September 15th, 2020 in the Chapter 1289 of the 2020 Acts of Assembly as amended. We're good. Make it so here. We will start with staff presentations for the items on today's public hearing. Planning Commissioners, I can see everybody and I will, I'm getting better at this. And if you need to wave your hand, I can see you to talk. That's great. For the benefit of the record, please keep your video on unless you need to step away and reduce the feedback. Please keep your audio muted unless speaking. The staff will also help keep, help us by muting and unmuting of Commissioners as necessary. Before I pass this on to Mr. Tahan, we're going to do something a little differently here. And Mr. Tahan's going to help me out with this. I need to get a head nod from everybody about item number 11. We discussed deferring this item until we meet in person. And we're going to do things a little differently, but I just want to make sure that everybody is still good with that. To deferring item number 11 until we can meet virtually. Good that, good with that. Okay, Mr. Tahan, we're good with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay, and you can take it away, sir.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Weiner. The plan is, Commissioners, that we will be meeting in person in a hybrid format at the March public hearing. So people will have the opportunity to come to speak to you and come up. We will utilize the convention center as we have previously. So that will allow for you to have your, that public input that I know some of you feel that we need to make sure that we have in addition to all the virtual input and the emails and letters that we've all received to help influence your discussion and potentially your decision on your recommendation. With that being said, if the, as the Commission chooses to continue the item, it may be prudent to discuss a potential one-hour virtual public workshop that you can have just to hammer out the last piece, which is that, which are the overlay districts and where you want the short-term rentals to, to be operated in. Since that's one that probably is the biggest point of discussion that we have on the board. So, Mr. Weiner, I don't know if that's something that you'd like to discuss with the Commission moving forward to this point?
Um, yes, sir. Actually, we had a couple of us to discuss that also. I think we're pretty, pretty well set except for the overlays. And I think an hour or so, maybe just to, just to run through the overlay part of our ordinance would help us out tremendously and, and deciding which way to go next month. Because I believe everything else was right on. We were, we were pretty much together on everything else. How would you all feel about that? Ms. Oliver?
I think, Mr. Tahan, we talked about you or city, city and Mike Inman, I think, addressed this in an email and then at the workshop about density. And so I'm just wanting to know if that's included in the workshop as well? As far as the radius and density and things like that?
So we had, we had discussed that with the city attorney's office. And it is in the, we have done the legwork on that. The ability to do a density is easily defined if you did it per the overlay itself. The whole overlay can have X percent of short-term rentals based on the number of rental units or dwelling units in the, in that overlay. While doing a radius makes it very difficult. And we don't believe that we have, we can, we can do that. And I may defer to Ms. Wilson on that. It may be easier for us to say you can not have another one within so many feet, similar to how we do for tattoo parlors and other similar uses where you can't have something, another one that comes in within so many feet. But, Ms. Wilson, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in on that density issue or we can make sure that we bring back this more details at that, at that public workshop?
Um, yes, I think we can go over it more fully at the workshop. But it is very difficult to do this unless we do one of the two ideas that Bobby had. One being so much density in the whole overlay. But that doesn't really help a street or a neighborhood. It's impossible to do it as a radius. That just does not work because we get half a streets and then we get, it's very difficult. And we've been giving so many of these and we grandfathered so many that there are just too many issues that will arise from a radius that is part of the ordinance. And we would want to do it either that way or as, as we do tattoos. And with so much between them. Okay, so we may want to do that later.
Can I say something real quick? Isn't the overlay already laid out on streets? Isn't the overlay saying this is this side of the street, not that side of the street or, or so forth? So if we just do it to the overlay, we wouldn't be defining any new area, so to say. It would be defined, it would still stay in the overlay. I'm just asking a question. I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's very true. That's exactly how we would do it if you wanted to do the whole overlay. I was saying that it's difficult to do it when you have, um, we just want to have this little neighborhood.
I understand.
Then you get into a lot of questions that are not easily answered.
And I think this is which direction we'd be going in, in our, in our workshop. Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, that's great. Let's just save it for the workshop.
Yes, Ms. Oliver, we can, we can do that. We'll, we'll hammer out the rest of it. But we have been doing research to try to provide options to the Commission. But yes, we will, we can do that.
Okay, so, so what are we going to do at the workshop? I mean, I'm a little concerned by what you just said. Well, we'll just keep working on this. We haven't discussed any of this. So I don't want to show up at a workshop and here's a draft and this is what we all decided.
Yes, sir. Mr. Edman, I think that was one of the requests from the Commission at the last workshop for us to look at the density.
Yeah, looking at the density is cool. Looking at the density is fine. I just want to make sure I understand what's coming forward. All of what you just described and what Kay described, sounds to me is like it's going to require some thought and some discussion. So I don't want to have something presented to me anyway, as though it is a fait accompli. I don't know who David talked to about this. We, a couple of us talked about it, he says. I didn't talk to anybody about it. So I'd kind of like to have that discussion and not just kind of have it presented as a fait accompli.
Yes, sir. I understand. No, the, we were just going to provide, that was the direction that we got from the Commission at the last workshop to provide options for that. There is no, I, the whole intent of that workshop is to hammer out the last pieces of the, of where the overlays would be and how you want them to function, so.
Okay, all right. Can you want to put together a few dates to offer so we could get that taken care of? Bobby, what do you get?
Yes, sir.
All right, so in saying this, we're going to do things a little different. I'm sorry, D, did you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Dave has, has said. And then possibly, Kay, if you could sort of send out or we could get an email through Bobby on what the parameters are, on what you just sort of briefly touched on as far as the density. And then, as Dave said, then we have something to sort of read and think about prior to going into the workshop.
Okay, Mrs. Wilson shaking her head, so she's making notes now. Okay, I did want to address something else real quick. We're going to change things around on this since we're going to defer this item. We're going to move it to the front, to our withdrawals and deferral part of our meeting. And there are people still signed up to speak. And legally, they are allowed to speak since it's been advertised. But I will make a note that everybody listening now that if you wanted to wait and speak to when we meet live in person to speak, you're more than welcome to, but you can speak today and when we defer this item at the front of the meeting. Mr. Tahan, did you want to add anything?
No, sir. Well, our staff, the staff will reach out to all those that have signed up to speak. And we'll, we'll also do that when we go to the break.
Okay, and saying that, I guess we can move right into staff reports.
Mr. Chair, before we start the staff presentation part, we have a few Commissioners that are calling in. Will you maybe take a few minutes to identify those callers to see if they are one of the Commissioner?
Sure.
Thank you. Yes.
Caller three, can you identify yourself, please? Caller user three, can you identify yourself, please? Caller user four, can you identify yourself, please?
Hello?
Yes. Can you identify yourself, please? Can you say that again?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. We can now proceed to the staff presentation.
Okay, sound good.
All right, good morning, everyone. This is Marshall Coleman, and I'll begin with our staff presentation. The first item on today is North Legend Outfitters LLC. And this is an application for a conditional use permit for a home occupation to sell high-end custom-built rifles and other firearm-related accessories on a 28,000-square-foot parcel located on Dartfield Mews in the Middle Plantation neighborhood. The applicant will sell firearms on a referral and internet sales basis. All shipment exchange will be secured upon delivery by the applicant's signature, which is required by law. And all federally controlled items will be stored and secured in steel vaults inside of the single-family home. In staff's view, the home occupation would not change the character of the neighborhood as it is a very low-intensity use. No testing of firearms will be done on-site and all hand-to-hand transactions of products will be limited to no more than four per month. The applicant will be required to have the Virginia Beach Police Department conduct a security assessment, which is noted in Condition 1. Condition 1 requires them to be done within one month of granting the CUP or the CUP will be revoked. Staff has received one letter of support that was in your supplements from the applicant's previous neighbor. The applicant operated his business at his previous home and had now has just moved to this new location and has asked for a CUP. The neighbor from his previous home mentioned that the applicant was a great neighbor. The business was discreet and there was no incidents. Staff also received one letter of opposition to this request stating that firearm sales is not an appropriate use in a residential neighborhood. As you can see on the screen where the opposition is located. The applicant was granted, as I mentioned, a CUP for firearm sales in 2016 at his previous address with no incident and is applying for this CUP to continue his home occupation at his new home. Staff is recommending approval of this application subject to the conditions listed in the report. I'll stand by for any questions.
Mrs. Klein, this is, this Lindhaven, I'm sorry, Mr. Graham.
All right, yeah, thank you, Mr. Weiner. So will the applicant actually have customers coming to the house to buy firearms?
Um, most of it will be on internet and a referral basis, but he will have some clients who come to pick up the items. But there is a condition that limits it to four per month. So he can have no more than four people per month coming back to actually pick up the items. A lot of them are internet sales.
Okay, and, and the, the, um, the opposition, were these homeowners adjacent to this house?
So as you can see on the screen, the red star is the only opposition that we received on Lindale Road. And you can see in the blue is the actual property that says R20. His only, his only opposition was that he doesn't feel that it's necess, that it's, that a firearm sale should be allowed in a residential neighborhood.
Okay, so, so not even on the same street or cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Correct, okay, all right. Are there any speakers signed up for today?
There are speakers signed up. There is one speaker who has signed up in opposition and then there are two speakers who signed up in support.
Okay, okay, I guess we'll, since there's speaker in opposition, we'll be hearing it, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't, I don't have further questions.
Um, I have a question. Mrs. Wilson, can you remind us again on the, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Edman. Hold on one second. Remind us again on firearm sales and what we're able to do and what we're not able to do, please?
Firearms sales should be treated just like any other sale from the house. We are not talking about firearms here. We're talking about just selling something from the house, whether it's a pine box or whether it's birdhouses or whether it's a gun, and they should all be treated the same.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Mr. Edman?
Thank you. I was going to ask, I don't know whether this is a Bobby question or a Kevin question or who, but we've done a number of these over the years. And because they're firearms, there's, there's always a fair amount of, you know, drama about it. But do we have any experience with any of these that have caused problems or gone bad or had some reason to believe that, that there's a particular problem? I've, anecdotally, I've not heard anything. I'm just curious. The, the, obviously, the person who's in opposition is, is well on the other side of the water from this site. And so I want to kind of speak to that general idea of the compatibility of this particular kind of use. Have you seen any problems?
Mr. Edman, as far as complaints of this nature, we have not had any in my time with the city. I will make sure we pull up some information if we've had any complaints for the hearing. But with it being such a charged issue, we have not received complaints with firearm sales in, in the city.
Okay, thanks, Bobby.
And Mr. Edman, I'd like to add just right quick that this applicant also received a conditional use permit in 2016 at his previous location, and there was no incident at that location. He's just moved to this location or is reapplying so he can continue his business.
Thanks, Marshall.
No problem.
Mr. Inman, did you have a question?
I'm, uh, I'm sort of messed up here. I'm trying to get back on my video and I've got feedback and everything. So I don't have a question. I'm just trying to get squared away. So count me out for our next 10 minutes.
Okay, all right.
Hey, hey, David. David, this is Jack. One thing of interest is, you know, just the Middle Plantation Civic League's letter, you know, about the deed restrictions. I mean, that doesn't have any bearing on, really on us, but you find that kind of interesting that maybe, might be limited otherwise by, by deed restriction on this, this property.
Mrs. Wilson, do you want to add on that?
Um, certainly, we do not enforce deed restrictions. It would be up to the Civic League and the community to do anything about their deed restrictions that they saw fit.
All right, is that okay, Jack?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item.
Before we move to the next item, can we do a mic check for caller seven, please? Caller seven. Caller seven, can you please identify yourself?
Well, I believe caller seven is Mr. Inman. That's why he's having the feedback issue.
Inman.
All right, check caller six, please.
Hello?
Caller six just left.
Thank you. All right, we can move on, Michelle. Thank you.
All right, the next item is item two. This is an application for a conditional use permit for an assembly use located on South Military Highway, on South Military Highway. The applicant is requesting to operate a event rental space within the 875-square-foot unit. The venue will provide gathering space for small birthday parties, baby showers, and paint nights. All events will take place inside of the building. Per the zoning ordinance, the site meets the parking requirement for a shopping center, which is one space per 250 square feet. With a total floor area of 8,000 square feet, the minimum parking requirement is 32 parking spaces. With 47 parking spaces on the site, the minimum parking requirement is exceeded by 15 spaces. The applicant intends to limit the number of guests to no more than 30 people. However, the maximum occupant load will be determined by the building official and the fire marshal. Traffic engineering does not foresee any, does not foresee an extensive amount of traffic to the site as most of the events will take place during peak, during off-peak traffic period. Staff has received a petition of eight signatures in support of the application. Only three people decided to provide their address, as you can see on the screen, and the others chose to remain anonymous but are also located on South Military Highway. The assembly use is consistent with the camp plan's vision for the suburban focus area eight military highway corridor. And the use will provide an affordable amenity to the community for the use of small gatherings and social events. With that being said, staff is recommending approval of this application subject to the conditions listed in the report.
Thank you. That's Kempsville. We have no opposition on this, correct?
No opposition.
Okay, I'm good for consent. Everybody good for consent on this item? Yep, all right, sounds good. Move on.
Caller number eight, can you please identify yourself? Caller number eight, please identify yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Can you please identify yourself?
Okay, my name is Jessica Diaz-Johnson, and I'm here with Jennifer Crump. We are the owners of Honeybee Daycare.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item is item number three. This is an application for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home located on Avery Way in the Woodbridge Point neighborhood. The applicant is seeking to provide care to up to 12 children within the single-family dwelling. The applicant has over seven years' experience caring for children and the outdoor play area is located in the backyard and is fully enclosed with a wood privacy fence. The request for a family daycare home is consistent with the policies and goals set forth in the camp plan for the suburban area. The property is organized and well-kept and provides a viable service to the community. To alleviate, to alleviate potential congestion in the right of way, a condition has been added to stagger pickup and drop-off times. As indicated in your supplement, staff is removing condition number four as recommended by our city attorney's office as we cannot limit the CUP to just the applicant. So any motion should include, should not include condition number four. Staff is unaware of any opposition to this request and is recommending approval of the application subject to the conditions in the report. I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions? Mrs. Klein? It's Centerville. It's you, right? Okay, good for consent? All right, we're good for consent. Number three.
David, before you move on, what is, could you, can Marshall explain that condition number four? I mean, I'm fine with everything. I was curious, you know, what that.
Sure.
What it means, what it doesn't mean. It's not a, I don't mean to belabor the point, but I'm just curious.
So condition number four initially was to limit the conditional use permit to the applicant only. However, we are able to do that legally. And so what we're doing is removing the condition because the CUP runs with the land and not the applicant.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
All right, the next one is Jessica Diaz-Johnson. This application is for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home located on Rutley Road in the Rosemont Forest neighborhood. The applicant is seeking to provide care up to 12 children within the single-family dwelling. The applicant has over 20 years' experience caring for children and has an assistant who has 16 years of experience as well. The outdoor play area is located in the backyard and is enclosed with a six-foot-tall privacy fence. The rear of the site, adjacent to the water, has a two-foot-tall netted fence with vegetative screening. Children will be supervised during outdoor playtime. The request for a family daycare home is consistent with the policies and goals set forth in the camp plan for the suburban area. The property is organized and well-kept and provides a viable service to the community. And just like I mentioned in the previous application, condition four will also be removed. So when we vote, we'll need to remove condition number four. To alleviate potential congestion in the right of way, a condition has been added to stagger pickup and drop-off times. Staff is unaware of any opposition to this request and has, and the applicant has provided two signatures of support from both adjacent property owners to the house. Staff is recommending approval of the application subject to the conditions in the report.
All right, that's another Kempsville one. I'm good with consent, everybody? Questions? D, you good? Okay, we're good.
Okay, this next item is a modification of conditions request to redevelop a portion of the First Chinese Baptist Church with a larger gathering space, offices, and classrooms. The site is located on Pritchard Lane in the Beach District, west of Lindhaven Parkway. The 1.27-acre site is Zoned R10 Residential. The original conditional use permit for a church was approved in 1961 and requests to expand the church and parking area were approved in 1985 and 1995. The church is now requesting to demolish the front wing of the building in order to construct a 4,600-square-foot addition with a 207-seat main gathering space, offices, and classrooms. The existing parking lot has 53 parking spaces, which exceeds the minimum by 11 spaces. The applicant is requesting a one-foot deviation to the front setback and a five-foot side yard deviation for the proposed porches. Staff supports the deviations. The elevations depict brick, cement, fiberboard siding and window trim, EFS, and architectural-grade shingles. The church site currently has two signs, one at each entrance. According to the applicant, the existing freestanding sign along Pritchard Road it will be removed. And a new building sign with the name of the church will be integrated into the front facade of the proposed addition, as seen on the bottom of the slide. Staff has recommended a condition to allow for the wall sign. Okay, the proposed modification of conditions for a religious use in staff's opinion is consistent with the policies and goals set forth in the comprehensive plan as the proposed redevelopment of the church will enhance the ability of the organization to have more capacity to serve the community and run more efficiently. I am not aware of any opposition to this request. Staff recommends approval of the application with the recommended conditions noted in the staff report. Are there any questions?
No questions? George, this is your area. Mr. Akrez, are you out there? All right, the problem is being on consent. Everybody else? Good?
Yeah, sorry, I keep losing my signal. Sorry.
That's it. So are you good with the consent, George? Okay, all right, move on.
All right. The next item is located on a 16.33-acre site at the intersection, north of the intersection of Lindhaven Drive and North Great Neck Road. The site is currently Zoned Conditional 836 Apartment District. One of the approved proffers limits the maximum density to 24 units per acre on the site, which is 392 units. The site is currently developed as the Marina Shores Apartments. The applicant proposes to redevelop the tennis courts area located at the southwest corner of the property, as you can see here. with a new forty-nine-unit building with three stories over ground-level parking for a total of four hundred and forty-one units, thereby increasing the overall density from twenty-four units to twenty-seven units per acre. The elevations depict an architectural shingle roof, a band of brick-of-the-near siding, and fiber cement panel siding. Building materials and fifty-two-foot proposed height are consistent with the existing buildings on-site. There are six hundred fifty-nine parking spaces that exist on the site. Improvements throughout the entire complex, shown in the gray area, will add one hundred twenty-five spaces, thereby exceeding the parking requirement by forty-nine spaces. New trees and shrubs are proposed along both street frontages and in the parking lot area. Landscaping will be reviewed in greater detail during final site plan review. The proposed modification offers to add one new building with forty-nine units to the apartment complex. Staff's opinion is consistent with the comprehensive plan's vision for the suburban area and Shore Drive Corridor that identify this area as primarily residential, as primarily a residential neighborhood with commercial uses to support residents. While the proposed density slightly increased from twenty-four units to twenty-seven units per acre, the proposed building height, massing, and materials are compatible with the existing apartment buildings on the site. The proposed development replaces underutilized tennis courts and exceeds the minimum parking requirement by forty-nine spaces. Public Works Traffic Engineering reviewed the request and raised no concern. The Bayfront Advisory Commission, or BAC, reviewed the application twice and at first recommended a reduction in the number of stories from four to three above parking and a reduction of the sixty units initially proposed. As a result, the applicant reduced the number of floors to three and the number of units by eleven. The BAC reviewed these modifications and finds the architectural design to be consistent with the Shore Drive Corridor Design Guidelines, which recommend a locally appropriate style with high-quality weather-resistant materials that are appropriate for the gateway to the Shore Drive Corridor, and staff concurs. The BAC is supportive of the request. I did receive seven letters of opposition and one letter of concern related to the impact of, to the existing traffic concerns at the intersection of, to the south, which is Lynn Haven Drive and North Great Neck Road, as well as creating more density in the Shore Drive overlay area. Staff recommends approval of the application, with the recommended proffers noted in the staff report. Are there any questions?
Mr. Graham?
My only question regarding stormwater, I know this is something that'll be worked out in site plan approval. So Public Works looked at the stormwater?
Um, not in this case, since it's not in the, we didn't do a preliminary study since it's not in the Southern Rivers Watershed area.
Okay.
So that will be worked out during site plan review, most likely underneath some of the parking lot there. And there is the pond on-site and other facilities, so it'll have to work all together.
Yeah, I mean, I know that there's already impervious surface there today with the tennis courts. I was just curious.
Right, and the parking area.
Mm-hmm, okay. I, you know, are the, are there speakers in opposition today?
We do, I know of at least one.
At least one, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yep, so we're gonna hear this, we're gonna have to hear this one anyway, so.
Yeah.
We'll get to it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I did inquire of the applicant's attorney if they were going to preserve the stand of pine trees that are along Great Neck Road. You'll note that there is on our drawing that we have, it shows existing trees. He sent me one, I think he's gonna show as an exhibit today, which more detail about preserving the trees along Great Neck Road.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'll go back to the landscape plan, which does show the existing trees that'll be preserved, as well as the darker colors of some additional plants and trees.
Yeah, which looks very consistent with, with what's there today.
Definitely.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
All right, sounds good, so we're gonna hear this one, all right? On to the next.
All right, thank you. The next application is a changing non-conformity request to expand the size of one of the two dwellings on-site. The property is located in the awesome five resident, oh, in the North End District, where only one dwelling is permitted per lot. The homes were constructed in the nineteen forties, prior to the adoption of the CD ordinance. Therefore, the homes are legal, non-conforming structures. The applicant seek to expand the front stoop by twenty-four square feet with a new porch roof, a two-hundred-and-eighty-square-feet addition to the first floor, and a two-hundred-and-eighty-square-feet addition to the second floor to include a breakfast nook and cover porch and office space. In addition, the applicant seek a deviation to the rear yard setback from twenty feet to nine feet where the, where the property abuts Cavalier Park. Staff find the proposal to expand one of the existing dwelling to include breakfast nook, cover porch, and office space is small-scale and will have no negative impact to the surrounding properties. The proposed elevation are in keeping with the scale proportion and design of the existing residences with other residential structures in the vicinity. The setback deviation request is also acceptable as the property abuts Cavalier Park, which is, which is between the property and the private portion of Cavalier Drive. There is no public access to this portion of the park, and residences in this area maintain the fifty-foot-wide park area as they with their own backyard. And based on the consideration described, described and further detailed in the report, staff recommends approval of this request, with the condition listed in the report. Staff did receive four letters of support from the adjacent property owners and one letter of concerns from specifically noting concerns that a proposed modifications could potentially impact the existing structure's designation as a contributing resource to the historical district. Are there any questions?
Any questions? George? Can you hear George? No, can't hear.
Sorry, I'm having problems, and I apologize for that, I hope it doesn't continue, but I'm good with it. Thank you.
Everybody good, consent? Mr. Redmond?
I just wanted to say it looks like a really cool house and a really cool project.
Yes, it does, okay. All right, we're good for consent on that? Um, all right, on to number eight.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The applicant here is proposing to reconfigure two subject lots along Indian River Road. The lots measure one-point-six and one-point-four acres and are zoned agricultural. Both were legally created and are buildable lots by right. The applicant intends to reshape the lots to increase their, their marketability and improve their shape. In their proposal, the one-point-four-acre lot will be moved to the north and gain access via a private lane. This would result in the lot losing its frontage along Indian River Road and therefore require the subdivision variance. This would not be a unique exception within the context of this neighborhood, however, as the zoning history of the surrounding area includes several examples of lots on private roads being granted variances for a lack of frontage along a public street. Post-reconfiguration would increase the width of both lots. Relocation of the one-point-four-acre lot would remove its street frontage and place it along the private lane, but that would increase its actual lot width and make it easier for development. It's only currently possesses about eight feet of frontage, which when it developed was even smaller than that, which is not sufficient for access. So as it stands, they would need to access along the private road anyway for any sort of development. One letter of opposition was received, which noted concerns to an increase in density and the removal, potential removal of natural features such as trees in an area that is below the green line. Since no new lots are proposed to be created, there will be no increase in density. Both lots will continue to meet the minimum area requirements of the zoning district, and this is, this is consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and inter-trac, inter-facility traffic area and vicinity master plan, which seek to limit the density and of development below the green line. As the request is not out of character with the surrounding neighborhood, will not create additional lots, therefore not increase density, staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to the conditions provided in the staff report. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Horsley, are you out there anywhere?
Yeah, I'm on the phone, do you hear me, Dave?
Yes, sir, sure do.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a very creative way to, to develop this property and for part of the time, we can put it on consent agenda.
Sounds good, everybody good with consent? We're all on consent, all right, sounds good, thank you, Mr. Horsley.
Thank you.
All right, great. For this next project, the applicant is proposing a subdivision to create three lots along Little Haven Road. The existing site currently has two lots, next slide, lot G one A and lot G one B. Those, both lots are zoned R forty residential. Lot G one A contains a single-family home, while lot G one B remains vacant. Both these lots were legally established. Two new lots would be created from lot G one B and a small portion of G one A, next slide. The remainder of lot G one A would comprise the third lot. The need for a subdivision variance arises from two of the proposed lots to the west, being unable to meet minimum lot width requirements. In R forty, that is one hundred twenty-five feet. The proposed lots have widths of one hundred and eight feet, next slide. One hundred and three feet. The lot to the east there, lot G one B two, also has a substandard lot frontage of ninety-six feet to the required one hundred feet. In nineteen ninety-six, the city of Virginia Beach acquired a pump station parcel to the southwest of lot G one B. You can kind of see that square cutout in the bottom left-hand corner. The width of this parcel is forty feet wide at the front setback. Had lot G one B been subdivided prior to this conveyance, both lots would have been able to meet the width and frontage requirements upon subdividing. Lot G one A itself was granted a subdivision variance in nineteen eighty-four for lot width. This proposal will not impact that width at all, and the lot will continue to otherwise meet all zoning requirements. As the resulting lots will meet all other dimensional requirements aside from lot width, they will not be out of character within this neighborhood, where several nearby lots also do not meet lot width requirements. And staff therefore recognizes the hardship to lot width, which was created by the pump station, and recommends approval of the request, subject to the conditions in the staff report. And I will take any questions.
Any questions?
David?
Yes, Wendy, go ahead.
Is there any opposition to this?
There is none.
Okay, I mean, I mean, all, all three lots are, you know, they, they all exceed forty thousand square feet, and I, I, you know, I don't, I don't have an issue with this. And if, if, if none of the other commissioners have an issue, I, I think it should be on consent agenda.
Sounds good.
One, one thing I've got is, you know, you know, I'm fine with this, and there is, you know, the, the city pump station that impacts the road frontage. And so, you know, we sometimes talk about hardship that, you know, a lot of times the subdivision variances don't necessarily meet that, that, you know, element. But in this case, you know, it, it might qualify for that just because of the street frontage reduction, you know, by, by pump station that, you know, land that was acquired, you know, by the city, you know, in this case. So I just want to point that out.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jack. All right, so we're good, number nine on being consent. All right, on to the next one.
This is an application for alternative compliance. It's in the Oceanfront Resort District, where the shack is located. They're requesting an application for outdoor dining and entertainment, outdoor recreation, open-air market, and recurring special events with various outbuildings and structures. The applicant has requested an indefinite deferral of this application. They need to work with the city to research more of the infrastructure constraints and options for future site redevelopment.
Thank you, Mrs. Moss, we'll still definite deferral, sounds good. All right, next one is item eleven. Mr. Tahan, do we wanna, since this is gonna be deferred, do we still want to read through item eleven? Or how would you like to proceed? Do not, you're not. There you go.
Oh, sorry, apologies, double muted again. So I think that we can note for the public that item number eleven is for the short-term rental regulations that were referred by the city council. The planning commission does plan to, or will be deferring this item to the March public hearing, where we will be meeting in public. Again, the, as far as the regulations, the, the planning commission does plan on having a public workshop to discuss the overlays themselves and, and what the final outcome of the recommendation that they would like to see to be voted on, while the rest of the regulations are noted in the staff report that have consensus from the commission.
Okay. Sounds good. So we can move on to item number twelve.
One thing, David, I've got, is it every thirty-day deferral? Indefinite deferral?
No, that would be a thirty-day deferral.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, item number twelve? I'm sorry, who's, David, I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead, Dave.
Well, isn't it just a little bit more efficient if we make it an indefinite deferral? It's entirely conceivable to me that twenty days from now, the circum, circumstance is gonna arise where, you know, this could be put off again. So, I mean, I think in the past, this is a little bit more flexible. If we have an indefinite deferral, we can always bring it up. That's my thought.
We're getting a ruling here. We can do that, okay, we're gonna make it a definite deferral.
Going, going up to the replay booth, is that what we're doing?
Yep, we're getting a ruling, Mrs. Wilson, say yes. All right, so that would, Jack, that's gonna be indefinite deferral. Okay? Item number twelve.
Good morning, everyone. This one is at five twenty-five Thirteenth Street, units A and B. This is a short-term rental conditional use permit request application. It's in the Beach District. The seven-thousand-square-foot lot is located in the R five D duplex district and contains one duplex dwelling. The applicant owns both units A and unit B. According to city records, the home was constructed in nineteen sixty-five, and the applicant purchased the duplex on July third of two thousand nineteen. The property does lie within the R PPP boundary, where parking during the evening and in overnight hours is limited. Based on this, a condition is recommended that would prohibit the occupants of the short-term rental from parking in the street during the restricted hours. No records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with the subject address. The applicant does accept city council's recently imposed conditions, reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. Each unit contains two bedrooms, so unit A has two, unit B has two. The property is located within the Lakewood subdivision, and the applicant's parking plan depicts four off-street parking spaces on the property. However, one space is deficient in width slightly. As a result, the applicant is willing to add a small addition to the existing driveway to fully accommodate this, that substandard space. Recommended condition number three was added to address this matter. As permitted by section two forty-one-two-one of the city zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator reviewed the parking plan and deemed it acceptable. Based on these considerations, staff recommends approval of the request, with the conditions listed in the staff report. Staff received no letters of support or opposition regarding this request. I'll stand by for any questions that you may. I'll stand by for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? George?
Yeah, so I've, I've received a couple of emails. I've received a lot of calls. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I have received, and they're all opposition. So I, I thought that some individuals will be calling in, and do we have any? Yep.
I haven't received anything. Why, is there anybody on tap for this?
We don't have any registered speaker in opposition of this item.
Mr. Weiner, can we hold on if, if we hear somebody come in to wanting to speak on this?
Sure. We'll, we'll put it on consent, and if anybody wants to speak on it by the time formal comes around, we can pull it.
Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. I, I have a question. I think you might have addressed it, but I was, I didn't hear you. The, the, the part of the parking driveway that they are going to make bigger for, for that fourth car, this is a prime example of the pervious surface and what they can put down, the material they can put down. Have we recommended anything yet? Or have you, have you told them what they can put there? Or, because we just don't want them to put concrete in there?
Yeah, so we are stressing to people about permeable surfaces. And there's so many different types out there, and some of them have different rates or percentages of impermeability versus permeability. So, yeah, when we have the discussion and they end up submitting their proposed material type, we will be looking for something that has a permeable aspect to it. Hopefully, a lot of permeability, but still able to support the weight of the vehicle.
Okay, just want to make sure. Yes.
So do we think that it's going to look attractive to have 13 Streets asphalt? I assume there's a concrete apron for the driveway, is that, I mean, and then we're going to have gravel and then have concrete? Is the driveway currently concrete?
Yeah, can we go to a picture? The driveway is currently all concrete, as is the driveway apron. So this would just be a small portion over to the right. Compacted gravel, as per our CBPA definition, is considered 100% impervious. So compacted gravel wouldn't be a surface that we would be looking for. But again, it would be a three-foot area over to the right. And aesthetics is something that we look at, but again, ultimately, it would be up to the zoning administrator once the applicant submits the material type that, that they prefer to put down.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just think that, I don't think it's going to be very attractive to have a little patch of, of, of something, some other material that's not consistent with the concrete.
Now, the, the applicant is.
It's not, it's not going to look good. That's just.
Yeah. The applicant is talking about at a future date, pulling all of it up and just redoing the whole thing in concrete. So that may end up being something that they so choose to do, and they could, because it's a duplex, they could get the two, the, the 36-foot width, 18 feet wide for each, each unit, and that would be approved by DSC. So that may end up being the path they choose, but if not, this three-foot addition was the, was the, the path that we were looking at based on currently what's going on.
Shouldn't it be specified that whatever's added is consistent in color and appearance with what's already there?
Yeah, and that would mean it would have to be concrete.
Well, okay, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm fine with that, because I mean, to me, you know, we're talking about a small area, you have a concrete sidewalk, you have a concrete driveway, concrete apron, and then all of a sudden, you've got this patch of something else.
Yeah, that looks terrible.
It looks terrible. I totally agree, Mr. Eman.
We could certainly, we could certainly change that in the, in the, the conditions. I know that small patches in the past have been used, people have used concrete pavers that haven't looked very, very bad. But if you want it to be concrete, we could certainly change the condition today and, and make that, make that change done.
Yeah, I just think it needs to be a material consistent.
Hold on, one at a time. Hold on. Go ahead.
Go ahead, who?
Mike, good, Mike.
Not, not only concrete, but concrete that's consistent with the appearance and the color of what's already there. Not, you know, you've got sort of grayish concrete over here, and then you've got white, white concrete next to it. I mean, it needs to be aesthetically, it's bad enough as it is, so don't need to make it any worse.
I agree with Mr. Eman.
Dave?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I do. I mean, I certainly agree with the concept, but I'm, I'm a little concerned that we start charging down the path of adding impervious cover. Kind of thought we were going down the other path. This also strikes me, by the way, of, of one of these things, I think we probably would be a lot, lot better off in the long run if we were to address, not in the context of a CUP, but if the ordinance were to speak specifically to what kind of materials you could use, what the permeability should be. I don't know, it was just Kevin makes that up each time one of these things comes up. You know, what the, what the, what the material is and, and how, and how permeable it is. I don't know. That doesn't strike me as the best way to do things. So I, as I've said before, and I won't beat that dead horse all day, I think we ought to try and be within the context of our ordinances and this ordinance as specific as possible about these things, because it seems like we reinvent the wheel for each one, and I don't think that's the best way to do it. But I, I mean, you know, I get your point about the, I mean, I agree with you, Mike. This is not, you know, the belle of the ball here in terms of its appearance. And appearance is important, but I am a little bit uncomfortable, this idea that we're going to just start requiring people to lay more concrete around. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, what are we going to do with that condition? That's what I want to know before we leave this.
In my opinion, there are plenty of materials out there, pervious surfaces and concrete also, asphalt that could, that could be poured in there. And I was, I know we talked about it in our workshop to get PJ Skelly here to give us like a, maybe he can give us a five-minute thing on our next work, next workshop, but there are, there are at least four or five different items out there that can be used that the city recognizes that are pervious, that could be used. I think that would look better than, yes, red concrete pavers, but there are things out there. So I, I personally think we need to be consistent with what our ordinance is going to say, and it has to be a pervious surface. That's my opinion, but.
Well, I was, okay, I, I was talking about this particular thing where you're, what is it, we're adding like two feet or something like that?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean.
Three feet.
Three feet. Like it is having to tear up the whole thing and put pervious surface. You can't, you can't have it unless you, I mean, that doesn't make sense. The patchwork thing is really, looks terrible.
Dave?
Will mentioned, you know, I think we can still probably, I think we probably ought to look into, you know, as a little bit broader project, the compatibility of appearance and the color that you mentioned, Mike, of whatever goes down next. Dave and I are in agreement about the, for, for the pervious stuff, I won't belabor that, but there's, it seems to me there probably is a number of different ways that you could mitigate the, you know, any kind of inconsistency between the existing pervious cover, I mean, impervious cover and the stuff that's, that's going to, that's going to join it and still accomplish that goal of, of, of limiting the pervious cover. I mean, I think you can probably come up with something that looks pretty decent. It doesn't have to be the worst thing in the world, is my view.
Mike, you want to add anything?
No, I'm done.
Okay. George, are we still good with consent unless somebody comes to speak?
Mr. Chair, we do have a speaker sign up in opposition to this request.
Okay, so we're going to hear it.
Perfect. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Not this item. My apologies.
Okay, no problem. So 12 and 13, we're going to put on consent. Did anybody want to have, had a word deck condition in there for the parking space or leave it the way staff has it written? George, any comments?
I mean, I, I was listening to everything and I, I appreciate everyone's input, but I don't think I'm going to be supporting it with the complaints and the neighbors that I have out there, but, you know, we'll take a vote. So whatever conditions you guys put forward.
Then it shouldn't be on consent agenda.
Yeah, I was just getting ready to say that. If you're not going to support this, and this is your area, we need to pull and hear it.
Right. With, with, with the input that I've got from the neighbors and the emails and the calls, I won't be supporting it.
Okay, so we're going to have to hear this one anyway. Dave?
Quick question. I'm just looking at these photos. Is this, is this, that sure seems like a lot of concrete that's there. Anyway, I don't know what the code is, but it sure looks to me like a lot. Is this not exceeding what the, what the code would allow in terms of that concrete pad in front?
It's three feet short, so each, each of these spaces would need to be nine feet wide, even if this was not used for short-term rental purposes, you know, any new duplex, any new single-family, nine feet wide. So we're three foot short.
Really don't want us to start looking like South Los Angeles.
All right. Mr. Redmond, I believe that you're noting that the driveway apron is larger than what we would norm, would normally be approved for the city code. So it is, based on the improvements that have been out there, it looks like this is a, an older apron that was replaced by city forces when we did the sidewalk improvement. So they can keep the existing curb cut the way it is, even though it's out of compliance with the current code, but they are widening the drive, the parking space on their property, which is permitted.
Okay, so, so we're going to have to hear this. Correct? Everybody want to hear this? Good? Okay, we're going to hear 12 and 13.
Okay, number 14. 5632 Freewill Lane, it's in the Centerville District. This is a 2068 square foot lot located within the PDH2A24 planned development district and contains one townhome dwelling within a row of five. According to city records, this home was constructed in 2016 and was purchased by the applicant on 9/19 of 2016. On-street parking is permitted 24 hours per day. However, due to the inherent narrowness of the townhome lots and the width of the double driveways along the street, there are few opportunities for on-street parking. Nevertheless, any overflow parking beyond the minimum parking spaces required could occur within the public street. No records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with this address. The applicant does accept city council's recently imposed conditions reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. There are three bedrooms in this home. The site is located within the Infinity Townhome subdivision, which is a planned development of 40 townhomes located in the Centerville community. The submitted parking plan shows all three required parking spaces located in the existing driveway. Since this project, or I'm sorry, however, one space does project two feet into the city right-of-way but is still within the driveway apron. Since the projection does not impede pedestrian or traffic flow, the zoning administrator deemed the parking as acceptable as allowed by section 24121 of the city zoning ordinance. Based on these considerations, staff recommends approval of the request with the conditions listed in the staff report. Staff has not received any letters of support or opposition relating to this request. Standby for any questions that you may have.
Any questions from anybody? Robin? Are you good with consent on this?
Okay. Mr. Chair, we, we do have a speaker in opposition on this item.
Oh, we do have, okay, we're going to hear this one. Okay. Item 14, we will hear. On the next one.
This is item 15. 409 24th and a half Street. This is in the Beach District. This 2,700 square foot lot is located within the A12 Apartment District and within the Old Beach overlay and contains one single-family dwelling. According to city records, this home was constructed in 1939 and the current owner purchased it on December the 3, 2020. According to the applicant's representative, now, this is a typo in your staff report that has been since changed. So under this bullet, according to the applicant's representative, the previous, not the current, the previous owners of the home rented the house out on a short-term basis for many years. However, they did not register the rental with the commission and the revenue. Again, not the current owner, the previous owner. The subject dwelling was constructed before onsite parking was mandatory, therefore the property does not currently meet the off-street parking requirements for short-term rental use. Because of this, the applicant is willing to add a code-compliant entry apron on 24th and a half Street and a nine-foot wide by 36-foot long, north-south oriented, compacted gravel driveway. A recommended condition was added to address this matter. On-street parking is not permitted on this portion of 24th and a half Street, nor is it permitted in the 10-foot alley. No records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with the subject address. The applicant does accept city council's recently imposed conditions reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. There are two bedrooms in this dwelling. The property, again, is located in the Old Beach overlay and was partially included in the original subdivision plat created by the Virginia Beach Development Company in 1915, but was later subdivided. The applicant's parking plan was approved by the zoning administrator with the accompanying recommendation conditions number three, four, and five. Recommended condition number three addresses the need for the compliant driveway apron as previously discussed. Recommended condition number four addresses a hedge row, which is recommended because parking access can only be granted from an improved right-of-way, and the 10-foot alley is intended for southbound traffic only. The aim of the hedge row is to dissuade vehicle operators, whose intentions may be to park on the subject property, from entering the 10-foot alley in the wrong direction and to clearly delineate the extents of the alley and the private property. Recommended condition number five addresses the existing compacted gravel currently on the subject property. This gravel is presently used in connection with the 10, the 10-foot alley and until recently, continued onto the abutting lot to the north. Since the northern lot is now under development, the alleyway gravel located on that lot was removed and the concrete driveway for the newly-built single-family home will soon be poured. Consequently, staff feels that the area of gravel associated with the 10-foot alley on the subject lot may be confusing to motorists. Therefore, staff recommends that it be removed, and the applicant was agreeable to this condition. Based on these considerations, staff recommends approval of the request with the conditions listed in the staff report. One letter of opposition was received that expressed concerns relating to the number of short-term rentals in this block slash row, the impacts of absent year-round neighbors, possible behavioral issues performed by short-term rental occupants, the burden placed on the neighbors to contact the homeowners or 311 when an issue arises, and a concern for the overall quality of life for the year-round occupants of the neighborhood. I'll stand by if you have any questions or concerns that you'd like to speak to me about. Thank you.
Yeah, so th- this one plays differently with me, and I, I did read the email, but it's, it's got that location east of Baltic. I see it more suitable for the STRs and unless you guys have any concerns, I was going to American man consent because of the location.
Anyone else?
I, I agree with George.
I do too. This was part of what we sent to council. Anything west of Baltic Avenue, we would, I'm sorry, east of Baltic Avenue, we would, we didn't have a problem within this area, so I'm, I'm going to support it also. Consent? No, no opposition, correct? Wa?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. There's no speaker in opposition.
George, going to consent? Okay. All right.
All right, moving on to item 16. This is 528 Vanderbilt Avenue. This is in the Beach District. This 5,000 square foot lot is located within the R10 Residential District and contains one single-family home. According to city records, this home was constructed in 1984 and was purchased by the applicant on 8/13 of 2020. On-street parking is permitted from 9:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily, therefore any overflow parking beyond the minimum parking space is required. Therefore, any overflow parking beyond the minimum parking spaces required could occur within the public street during those specified times. No records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with the subject address. The applicant does accept city council's recommended conditions reducing the number of bookings in a seven day period to one and limiting the overnight, night guest calculation to two per bedroom. This home contains four bedrooms and is located within the Croatan subdivision. The applicant's parking plan depicts all four required off-street parking spaces within the existing driveway, which meet the requirements of Section 241.21 of the city zoning ordinance. Based on these conditions, staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed in the staff report. As you can see on the, the map, so let's go to the map for the opposition and, and support. Staff received nine letters of support and six letters of opposition. One letter of opposition included a website link to an opposition petition, but the petition only appeared to contain a number of people opposed and did not appear to provide a corresponding name or address for those who signed it. The number stood at 50 when the petition was submitted to staff. Originally, it was thought that the Croatan Short-Term Rental Committee, who sent a letter of opposition, was affiliated or part of the Croatan Civic League. I received a letter questioning that and reached out to that, to one of their representatives and found out that the short-term rental, the Croatan Short-Term Rental Committee is a branch of the Croatan Civic League. The main concerns in the letters of opposition focused on the transient nature of short-term rentals, possible unruly behavior by occupants of the short-term rentals, potential increases in traffic, noise and litter, the number of short-term rentals in the neighborhood causing it to lose its residential feel, the unease of complaint enforcement and the possibility of the short-term rental causing increased on-street parking demand. I'll stand by for any questions. That concludes my presentation for that one. I will say that there are, I think, at least one or two signed up to speak in opposition and five or six or more, something like that, in, in support.
Okay, so we do have people to sign up in opposition for this to speak. George, you have any comments or you just want to wait till we hear it?
Yeah, we're, I, I figured we were going to hear it because the entire, most of the community and Croatan has called me and they've been calling me for several months on, on all these STRs. I, I've kind of got a feeling we're city council's going with it, but I mean, we'll hear it. I, I did read some of the emails for, that are supporting it, but I'd like to hear it.
Okay. All right, we will hear this item, item 16. Okay. On to the next.
Good morning, Commissioners. This item is Cynthia Shepherd at 304 28th Street, Unit 201. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at this condominium located in the Playa Rana condominium. There are 42 total condominium units. There are two onsite parking spaces that will be used to fulfill the parking requirement. City Council has previously approved three short-term rental units on this property. The applicant can reasonably meet all the requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance for short-term rental use. The applicant is agreeable to the recent city council condition changes, noting that the recommended, recommended conditions do reflect city council short-term rental revisions by reducing the number of booking, bookings in a seven day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. No letters of opposition or support have been received.
George?
Yeah, so this is a prime example of an STR location. Good to go.
Perfect. On the consent, number 17. Okay, Summer?
Okay. The last item on this agenda is Ryan Summers, 304 28th Street, Unit 113. This is also located in the same condominium as the last one, Playa Rana. There are 42 condominiums. There are two onsite parking spaces that will be used to fulfill the parking requirement. City Council has previously approved three short-term rental units on this property. The applicant can reasonably meet all requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance and the applicant is agreeable to the recent city council condition changes.
Mrs. Oliver, you have a question?
And I guess this is probably for Kay. I know with the Mayflower, there's a certain number of apartments that as they, as they go into STRs, it becomes a question of whether it's, becomes a, a hotel or motel. Does this happen with this, the same? Is that, does that apply to this type of building as well?
There is nothing in the zoning ordinance that would indicate that. A hotel has to have special features. A lobby, the, some of the wrecking, record keeping, those kinds of things that this may never meet. It really isn't too much about the rooms themselves and how they're rented.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
George?
Same. Same thing. I'm, I'm good for consent.
Consent. All right, we're good with consent on item number 18.
All right. Mr. Chair, that was the last item. Before we, before, staff would like to review what we believe are likely to be on the agenda for withdrawal, deferral and consent for the formal session today at noon.
Okay.
So for withdrawal, there's no item for withdrawal. Agenda items 10 and 11 are recommended for indefinite, indefinite deferral. Agendas item 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 15, 17, or 18 are recommended for the consent agenda of both the reckless and short-term rentals.
And do you want to go to items to be heard?
Items to be heard are item 1, 6, 12 and 13, 14, and 16.
Okay, this one makes sure we're all on the same page. All right. Any other news at all? Everything good to go?
Mr. Todd?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave?
Yes, I wanted just real quickly, I wanted to say, in case you all missed it, our colleague, Mr. Alcaraz, has a new business venture, which was the subject of an excellent article in newspaper, I think this past weekend. Anyway, if you haven't seen it, please look it up. It sounds like a heck of a place. I wish it were in walking distance of my house, George. But anyway, I want to say congratulations and I hope for you guys that didn't see it, please go look at it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Todd? Any, Ned?
We do not have anything else at this time, so we can-
Okay.
Mr. Wall has something else.
Yeah, David, I just have one thing and it's a, it's a letter on the, the Brown property that, you know, received. It's, you know, it, it was well documented. It was for agenda item, agenda item number eight. And I just want to acknowledge it because it was, it was well written, well documented, researched. And I had some questions on Mr. Brown's property that he's acquired, you know, over the past five or six years. And we've heard three, at least three applications, you know, concerning, you know, him and how, you know, he's, you know, acquired these properties and what the timeframe is for the first application. I, I meant to mention it during the, when we were going over it during the application. But I just want to acknowledge it and I'm not going to point out the person who wrote it. Just, you know, I don't know if that's proper, but no, it was a good letter and it was in our supplemental package. And just want to acknowledge that, that I, I thought it was, you know, good, good, well researched, new document. So that's, that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wall, did you have anything that you wanted staff to address from that letter?
No, I, I don't. I, I think we keep it, you know, on the consent agenda. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, that letter was, was pretty, pretty thorough. And I didn't want to, didn't want to overlook it. I want to acknowledge it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. With nothing else, I guess we will adjourn this and be back here at noon. Try and come back about 10 minutes early so we can make sure everything, video and audio is working correctly. Right? We are adjourned.